Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for joining us this evening to our regular Board of Directors meeting. First, a couple of things that we need to take care of. Director Gronwald is ill this evening and will not be joining us, so if we can have a motion to excuse her.
To excuse her, to Gronwald.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the second thing, Vice President Bradford is just running late this evening. She should be joining us as the meeting progresses, so we'll see how that goes. The second thing, we have a scout in the audience, and we like it when our scouts join us, so if you could introduce yourself, tell us what school you go to and what badge you're working on.
I'm Andrew Elson. I go to Heritage High School as well as Cascade Academy, and I'm working on my citizenship and community badge, so I have to come to a school board meeting or other community meeting, and I have to find an issue and kind of get both sides of it, so that's why I'm going here.
Great, thank you for joining us. All right, next on the agenda is to adopt our agenda, so we'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Great. All right, the next is our Board Consent Agenda. Again, one, any motion?
Move to adopt the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right, next is our Superintendent Consent Agenda.
Move for adoption of the Superintendent's Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
So move to second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Okay.
All right, next we'll move on to our Superintendent Report for this. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Marino.
And it seems we're just going to try to get through this before Victoria gets here.[157.01][157.01](Laughter).
Yes.
So I will just report a few things that have occurred in the last week or thereabouts. Last Friday and Saturday, I was fortunate enough to spend the better part of Friday and then Saturday with the Board and a lot of the Cabinet at the Board Retreat, which you're all familiar with, I believe you were there as well. But I think it's important to note that we had some good conversation around the whole Board Governance. The Board Governance structure that we have was adopted a couple of years ago, and it was led by the Board as well as John Steege when he was superintendent, so it was good to get the kind of the background from the Board at that meeting around the kind of the why and the goals of the Board as we rethink, and it was good to get consensus on kind of the path that we will take as we move forward over the course of the next year, and trying to with the reset focus on the things that we really see as important in how we're going to measure the district, and also kind of value the time that people are putting in to create the reports as well. So we'll see that as the year comes on, goes on. Yesterday, we had the first day of our two-day management seminar, and we were fortunate to have Julie and Victoria were there yesterday, and the work that the district administrators are moving forward with was a book study around the, I can't remember the name of it, what's the title of the book?
Leading.
Leading with Focus, but it's by Schmoker, the author, and basically the whole gist of the book is trying to really focus on fewer things and really understand what is important as we move our program forward. One of the things that we talked a lot about at the reset was that we kind of had been doing a lot of different things, and we needed to kind of refocus, and so Bill and Jay and Scott and others have led the instructional cabinet through some work to kind of create new instructional tenants that were also the focus of that. It was good, it was a good time to get together and kind of recap a little of what we all went through this last year, which was full of a lot of things that most people wouldn't maybe experience in their career, let alone in about a six-month period. So we talked a bit about that and kind of the focus and where we're going over the course of the next year, and I think it was a good event, I think, and they finished that this morning. This afternoon, we had a gentleman by the name of Charlie Shrek, who worked for Clear Risk Insurance Company, do the second of what will be, I think, five or six presentations to staff around boundary invasion training. He met last Friday with all the secretaries in the school district. Today, he, as well as our Associate Principal from HILA, Kate Dewine, and Michelle Croston, an intern that works at Chehalis, led folks through not only the boundary invasion training, but also kind of how do we work as a system when kids bring forward complaints or when they have issues, when they're bringing them forward, how do we communicate, how do we take interviews from students so that they don't feel have disenfranchised and not listened to or not heard? And it's not that, I don't think the staff ever has the intention of not listening or not supporting what the kids are saying, sometimes it's just how you communicate and the way you respond can end up creating this idea, and the last thing we want to do is have kids feel like they can't come forward, or that they're uncomfortable coming forward, or that if they do come forward, that it kind of shuts them down for future situations that might arise. I think that that was well received as well. Our intention is to get in front of every group in the district that works in the district, either through direct one-on-one meetings or through individuals going in. We tape the session that was done for the secretaries, and that's going to be made available to everybody. It's something that we take very seriously, and we have to take it and have to continue to take it very seriously, and I think I said it yesterday, we all wouldn't be here if it wasn't for kids. We wouldn't exist as a school district, we wouldn't exist as a district office unless we were supporting buildings where kids exist, and part of supporting kids is also making sure the kids are safe and feel protected, and we have to, we have to be, it's got to be our top priority. So, felt good about the meeting today, I think the staff took it very seriously. Next week, I think we have three separate sessions with all the teachers in the district that will go through the same trainings with Mr. Shrek. So anyway, it was, it was a good day, and we will continue working hard on all of these situations. Beyond that, I would just say we're all real excited about being back and getting ready to start the 1920 school year. Spent a lot of time over the summer working on the budget, which I think might be the next thing we talk about, but I'll leave that up to you as the President of the Board to call the agenda.
Do you have any questions for Mike, for the report? No? All right, well then, we'll lead into the Budget Update.
Budget Update, okay, I'm going to switch my location and go over here and do the Budget Update.
Okay. Okay, right. Oh. Mike, just so we're clear, this is like the first reading of the budget, correct? Because the next forum meeting, we're going to-
Correct.
-have it up for adoption.
Yeah.
If there's any changes.
Correct. So what we have done, what I've been fortunate enough to do since August of 2000, is present budgets to the school board, and what we do is this meeting, it's a kind of a budget conversation around making a presentation of what's in the budget for the 1920 school year, and then at the actual meeting on the 27th, that's when the, if you don't mind turning it out over there, it's just fine. No, I'm just kidding.
(Laughter).
Get some support.
Yeah, some money support, sorry.
The, at the meeting on the 27th is when there will actually be a resolution presented to the Board, and the resolution is the actual formal action that the Board takes. I think when we've done these meetings in the past, we've welcomed questions from the Board, and I think the community has questions as well.
Yeah, I think we'll open it up for public comment after the presentation.
Yes. So, so this year, what I would say about building the budget, in terms of the process, you know, everybody on the Board and most of the people in the room participated in the budget forums that we went through. So if we go back to February, March, we had a pretty significant shortfall that we were anticipating as we built the budget, which ended up leading to four community forums in March, and I think they were all in March, and then we waited for the Legislature to complete their work, which they did by the end of April, and then we came back out with two more forums after we had some final recommendations to the Board that they, the Board ultimately moved forward with. There'd been a lot of talk about those reductions over the course of the last several months, ultimately ending up with the budget that we are presenting today. The, make sure, there we go. So the budget that we're presenting today is looking at a total expenditure of approximately $385 million. We're showing a beginning fund balance of around $22.8 million. Now, that $22.8 million for the beginning of 1920 is coming off of a beginning balance of 1819, right around $24.4 million, so we're coming down, I think we'll be around $22.8, $23 million in that range when we start the 1920 school year, and we're budgeting for a reduction of the fund balance from $22.8 million down to about $19.6 million at the end of 1920. As part of this conversation that we have today, not only will we talk about the 1920 budget, but I'll also show a slide, kind of, we're obligated to also have a conversation about the four-year outlook. The Legislature a couple of years ago put that requirement on school districts, they have their own four-year outlook. At the time that they did that, we, I know I talked about the fact that a four-year outlook is very problematic because we don't know this year, next year necessarily what the Legislature might do, so you kind of have to take that with a grain of salt, but we'll talk about the four-year outlook as well. We had in the budget forums indicated that we were going to look at about a $2.5 million use of fund balance. This budget's got us at a little more than that, a little over $3 million. Ultimately, as we get into the year, we'll get a better sense of how things are going to play out, because as in every year, there are always unknowns, and I'll talk about kind of what some of those unknowns might be as we look forward. The next slide, if it's there, kind of gives you an outlook. One of the things that we were dealing with was the fallout from the McCleary, you know, the new funding formula with McCleary, as they changed the, you know, when we were talking budget reductions, and when we ran our levy this past February, we were looking at a $1.50 levy cap for school districts like us. They ultimately increased that $1.50 levy cap to $2.50, which significantly kind of changed the potential financing landscape for school districts, but since we had just recently passed a levy, it didn't put us in a position to really react to that very much. We talked a lot over the last year to two about the spike in state revenue and the reduction of local revenue. In addition to that, we also talked this last spring about the fact that our enrollment was declining, and you can see the projected enrollment decline from 1819 to 1920. Really, if you take 1617 as the baseline year, at 26,420 FTE, down to the 2520, we're talking about a 4.5% reduction of enrollment. And again, if you're thinking about 1,200 students and we're receiving well over $8,000 a student now, it's probably about a $10 million reduction of revenue related to enrollment. When we talked about it in the spring, I talked about when you, when you reduce enrollment, it naturally reduces some teaching staff, it doesn't necessarily reduce classified staff, but if you think about the reduction in enrollment and the reduction in teaching staff, it's maybe about 50% of the total loss of revenue that you end up saving in staffing costs on the certificated side, so if it's a $10 million reduction, that's probably $5 million of that, we had to figure out another way to deal with that, not just in this year, but over a three-year period. We also talked about special education enrollment, and historically we've talked about it because in the past, there was a cap on the amount of, there's not a cap on how many students you can claim, there's only a cap on how many students the state will fund, and that number used to be around 12.7%, so when you look at this slide and you get to 1617, we were right at, it's 1516, 1617, we were right at that 12.8% threshold. When the Legislature changed the McCleary formulas, they also increased that to 13.5%. You can see that our overall enrollment in ages 5 to 21 is staying pretty steady around the 3,300 over the last several years while our enrollment has declined, and so when that happens, what ends up, it ends up pushing that percentage back up. Again, we're budgeting for a 13.2% special ed to basic ed percentage gap or percentage ratio, and again, 13.5% is the new cap in the funding formula now, so I just mentioned that because it's something that we have to continue to watch. The Legislature helped us when they made that change, they could help us in special ed a number of other ways, this really wasn't the way anybody necessarily wanted to be helped, but it did help somewhat. They still are severely underfunding special education, I think this budget, it's like in the $10 to $11 million range for us, somewhere around that. I talked briefly about, now let's see, which is the next slide that shows up here? Levy rates. I talked briefly about levy rates and the change of law, and you can see in the, in the slide here, 2019 was the first year of the $1.50, new $1.50 cap that we ended up rolling it back to. I've added in the technology levy because we passed the technology levy for the first time in February of 19, and kudos to Gail and everybody that worked hard on that. I'd like to mention, and the EEA was certainly a part of that bill, thank you, and it's good for me to look every now and then, see who's out here and who I can thank. I think Dan might have helped as well, putting signs up, and I know that Marty was supportive as well. When we get to 2020, what I would point out in 2020, those rates, the $1.66 that you see for the M&amp;O levies, that is related to the increase of the, of the state cap, so they went from districts like us, we were capped at $1.50, they increased that to $2.50. When we ran our levy in 2019, both the M&amp;O and the technology levies, not the technology, but the M&amp;O levy, we also received levy equalization funds as part of that because our tax base is lower than the statewide average. When we ran our levy, the rules at the time were, you got to run, you got to be at $1.50, if you're not at $1.50, you're not going to get 100% of your levy equalization funds. So we ran it for what we thought might be a little higher than $1.50, with the, not the idea that we would necessarily be able to collect those funds, but that we wanted to make sure that we would have the ability to get all of the levy equalization dollars, and then when they changed the rule of the law around levies and allowed the collection to be up to $2.50, we either could run a supplemental levy, or we could collect what we passed. We ultimately, as a Board, decided to just collect the amount that the voters had passed. The difference from the $1.50 is the estimated $1.66, so that's based upon our estimate of what values we think are going to be for 2020. So we're looking at $1.66, the technology levy at $0.40 for the first time in the district's history, and then the debt service levy is the levy that we run to collect funds to make the payments on our bonds that we sell in support of the bond that was passed in 2018, and pass bonds. We've talked a little bit about the fact that we're going to run a bond, we're going to sell bonds in September. What we did was make that estimate, when we passed the bond in 2018, we had an advertiser rate of $1.77, and that's what we're estimating for 2020. When you calculate all of them together, we're at $3.83 total levy rate, which is still less than, if you go back to 2016, we were at $5.35, so we're still quite a bit less than that. The other thing I would mention though is that the state property tax also increased by around $89.90. So the $3.83 and the $0.90 puts us right around $4.73 in total school taxes, which is still lower than where we were in 2016. So, I feel like where we're at right now, we've been forthright with what we're, I feel good about the numbers that we have that we're moving forward there. One of the things that I mentioned earlier was the fact that we have the OEs and we have the results policies. One of the OEs specifically asks for us to publish the assumptions, the main assumptions that went into the budget, enrollment being one, another one though is salary costs, labor costs, and so you can see here by employee group what is in this budget, what was built in in terms of salary increases. The non-rep group, which would be non-represented administrative staff, the district office is at 4%. The principals are a range of 3.1% to 5.5%. The, what we did with that was really, what we tried to work towards is more of a comparison of Vancouver as opposed to comparing around the state, and so what we had done with the principals group was to look at the Vancouver principals' salaries and try to kind of match them up, and that's what that resulted in. The EEA number that's represented here is 4.3%, and that, that number is based upon when we negotiated with EEA a year and a half or a year ago, a year ago. That was the calculation at the time that we had for year two of the salary increases, so that's what we've published there. The, both PSE groups, you see an 8.5% number for large group and an 8% number for office clerical. Again, keeping with the idea of trying to compare with Vancouver. Vancouver had provided a fairly large increase with some of their groups, with their classified groups this past year, and so what we were trying to do was over a three-year period, get ourselves so that we were in a comparative position with them. Office clerical ratified their agreement, I don't know, I think we voted on it in July, I think, if I remember right. The large group, PSE, did not end up ratifying, they are, as I understand it, meeting now with their group again, and essentially trying to ratify the same, with a little change, the same agreement that we had with them. And then the last two coaches' contracts were previously approved agreements that pegged their salary increase to inflation, which was the implicit price deflator. The next few pages are going to get into kind of, maybe, ah, they're actually pretty good-sized numbers, so that you can actually see them. I just want to kind of point out a few things with this sheet, so this, this page looks at the bulk of our expenditures by program area. The basic ed overall increase, we're showing at a little over 3%, 3.1%, which is actually pretty amazing that we were able to keep it to that point when you have some salaries increase higher than that, and what it really represents is the fact that a lot of the reductions that occurred were for things as opposed to for people. Some of that was staff-related, but it was primarily enrollment-related. We did make a number of changes within our curriculum budget and some of the technology things that we had done. Still able to though, as we had forecast, move forward with a pretty significant reading curriculum adoption that we've got staff in this month and for the last few months training on and being prepared for for the fall. What shows us a pretty significant reduction in alternative learning experience is actually not, it's just the legacy program, the program that we have a legacy which has been funded through ALE formulas in the past. We ended up kind of tweaking the schedule there a little bit so that it's basically operating as a kind of a smaller high school, so it's not an alternative program. What that means is each student, there are a few programs within the legacy program that are still alternative learning experience, there's an online program, there's a reentry program, but the bulk of the kids that are on campus on a day-to-day basis are funded basic ed like if you were at Evergreen or Heritage or any of the other high schools. What it means practically is that as an ALE student, you have an individual learning plan, and each month you have to measure that to see how did the hours kind of match up to what was proposed, and then there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. At the same time, the state funds ALE at a lower rate per pupil than they do basic ed, so it kind of helps us on both sides to do it this way. I also want to mention the special ed, you see the increase in special ed at 10% of what we had budgeted, and I don't think ultimately it will be that high, although I mention it just because if you look even the actual, from 1718 to the budget for 1819 to the budget for 1920, we continue to have pretty significant growth in the special ed expenditure side of things, where it's just a harder program to be able to keep expenditures at a 3% or 4% level, and that also reflects just some of the issues that we deal with on a daily basis, and I think when you look at our revenue to expenditure, we're still very easy, it's very easy for us to show the underfunding from the special ed program. In the 2021 school year, the funding model changes a little bit, and districts that have been more inclusionary with special needs students in the regular ed classrooms spending more time will be funded at a higher level. We're a district that's been kind of ahead of that, I think, say what, if you look at our, you look at big districts, districts our size, and our percent of time spent in special needs versus in basic ed, we're significantly ahead of other districts, so those other districts are going to lose some funding on that, or they're going to have to, it's kind of OSPI's way of trying to, trying to push districts to consider more inclusionary models. The other one I would mention is the transportation program, you see fairly significant increases in the transportation program, about a 17% increase year, it's really not year-over-year because what we spent in 1819 is actually higher than that 14.8%, but the transportation program is, it's just, we transport a lot of students, we do a lot of work within the transportation program. We're getting to the point where we're more fully funded than we've been in the past, and that's helpful, but it's just something that we always have to watch. The next page gets into just some of the federal programs, there's nothing hugely significant in the federal programs, which gives the total expenditure $385.3 million almost. I think the biggest unknown from, it's kind of a known but not really, is the whole switch to the SEB in January. We still haven't gotten full understanding of all of the rules, and we understand eligibility, but we still have some work that we got to get through, we still got to see what the actual premiums are that they're going to, we're starting to get numbers in terms of what employees will pay out of pocket for their choices, but we haven't necessarily gotten the numbers necessarily on what the district has to contribute on every one of these students, so I think that's still a little bit of an unknown. I would also mention at the bottom of the page where we have all those transfers identified, we do not have a transfer identified to the Transportation Vehicle Fund this year, so what we did to build into the budget was to suspend that for a year, and then when we get into the year, we're going to see how things are evolving and how we're doing to determine whether or not we move forward with that. The second thing is kind of a little further down where it says Transfer to Sinking Fund, that's a transfer that the district committed to back in 2010 when we received bond funds from the federal government to build HILA. We repay the principal, the federal government pays all of the interest on that property. We've set aside $1 million for, I think, 10 years at the end of this year, the 11 years next year. The transfer for 1920 will come from the Capital Projects Fund instead of the General Fund, that was another thing that we did to try to help preserve the General Fund. At the end of the day, we will make something like 14 or 15 transfers of around $1 million into the Debt Service Fund, and then the investment proceeds from those deposits will grow to the $17 million that will repay the federal government, and at the end of the day, we'll probably build a school that was kind of a showpiece for about $30 million and only cost the taxpayers $15 million, and actually not even- and actually not even raise taxes to do that because we've carved that out of the general fund. So that's really been a significant thing that the district did. The next page is expenditure activity by comparison. So what we started... This goes way back to when John Dieter became superintendent. We kind of wanted to look at what we had spent the year prior to him becoming superintendent, which was the two thousand four, two thousand five school year, then look at what the most current year was actual expenditure-wise and then what we were budgeting for nineteen twenty to kind of just show where we've been and where we're at by major categories. So you can see what we're budgeting for teaching and teaching support. So this is classroom, it's the library, it's counseling, it's playground, it's extracurricular, those kinds of things. We're budgeting for right around seventy-four percent of our budget in those areas where it was below seventy percent fifteen years ago. And in seventeen eighteen, the most recently completed year, about seventy-three percent. So we're continuing to put money into the buildings, into the classrooms, into the areas really where, I think most people would argue, where we should spend money. We also show how we compare to the statewide average, how we compare to large districts. There's about ten districts our size that are in that comparison. The gap from the sixty-nine point six to the seventy-three point, that's a little over four percent. So when you think about four percent out of a three hundred eighty-five million dollar budget, you're talking fifteen, fourteen, fifteen million dollars that over time has shifted from other areas into the into the classroom, into the buildings, and that's significant. I think another significant thing is the central administration percentage that we show. We were low in the most recent year that we have actuals for seventeen eighteen. We were at five point four percent versus five point nine for districts our size and six point seven percent statewide. And that five point four is going below five percent in the budget, down to four point nine six. Again, one of the key things that occurred when we went through, actually before we even got to the community, when we actually sat down and met with principals and started listening to experts that work within the district and then kind of hearkening back... I like to use the word hearkening because it's very... Just makes it sound like I know what I'm talking about. If you go back to oh nine, ten, and eleven, twelve, when a lot of you were here, Rob is a committee member, Victoria has a board member, the whole idea is, again, we would not exist if it weren't for kids and if it weren't for schools. And when we looked at reductions then and again now, we need to look at the district office before we look at anything else, understanding that that does impact the system, but it impacts the buildings less if you're doing it here than there. So I think it shows as we look at that number pushing down below five percent. And again, even the half a percent from last seventeen eighteen to here represents about a million and a half dollars in reduced expenditures just at the district office. Building administration remains roughly the same, and we didn't really make significant reductions there. And that's where, if we're going to have administration, that's where it should be, at the building, help support the... What's happening there. Revenue. The first thing that you'll note if you look at this, the very first line in here is local levy. And what we've been saying ever since McCleary came through was that you would see a reduction of local levy over... You know, we're going to receive more money from the state and less money locally. So you can see where we're down from around fifty point five million in seventeen eighteen, which was the last full year, down to where we're at now at about twenty-nine point eight million. And that's a little higher number than what it might have otherwise been because of the levy law that changed and allowed us to collect a little bit more money. When you look at levy equalization, the line below, we actually show a little bit of an increase. That's a testament to Senator Cleveland. We've talked about this in many meetings. Her vote to help pass that levy bill to allow not just Evergreen to go from buck fifty to two fifty, but a lot of different things around the state helped King County pretty significantly. She was able to leverage her vote and do about a six million dollar, a little over six million for Evergreen over a two-year period. So that's a number that's kind of artificially inflated by around four million. We would have been four million less than that, unless equalization weren't it for her work. Very significant. I would mention also down below, under the special purpose, the six point eight number, where you don't really see dollar amounts in the past. That, one of the things that the state did was change the... Well, we budgeted for levy equalization there. So we've always applied for levy equalization dollars, and we set it up in that line item as opposed to others. And then we also have a little bit of money in there related to the fact that we believe we've got more in expenditures for the SEB and for health benefits. But when you use our system, you put the expenditures in on one side. You can't reduce the expenditures once they've been in. So the way that we're offsetting that was adding a little bit of revenue in that category. And the reason I mention that is on the next page, when you get down to the bottom line for revenue, you can see that budgeted for two thousand eighteen nineteen, we were at around three hundred and seventy-two million. And we're budgeting in nineteen twenty for around three hundred and eighty-two million. When you look at that, those dollars, the levy equalization dollars that we got extra that we wouldn't have anticipated, the money that we've kind of inflated that to offset the benefit expenditures that we couldn't do on the benefit side. And then also, if you look under transfers, there's four point three million in two thousand nineteen twenty. That's the capital technology levy being collected in the capital projects fund and then moved to the general fund. When you look at those three figures together, you're at around ten to eleven million dollars worth of revenue that we weren't anticipating when we were honestly even... Well, we were interested in tech a year ago, let's say a year ago. Because we talked a lot about the fact that we didn't have revenue growth. We were getting a lot of revenue growth in the eighteen nineteen year because the state accelerated, but we were going to go backwards in nineteen twenty was our belief. And if you take that ten, eleven million off the three hundred eighty-two, we're back down to about where we were in eighteen nineteen. So what we're really looking at in nineteen twenty is, other than the technology levy and the one-time money from Senator Cleveland, really no revenue growth, which makes it even more important for us to be able to try to manage our expenditures as much as we possibly can. The indicators for enrollment, you can see them by elementary, middle, high school, and alternative. Overall, the... If you take elementary, middle, and high school, we're about three hundred nine FTE lower than what we had budgeted for the eighteen nineteen school year. So that three hundred nine million is that enrollment reduction that we had talked about. Special ed, we're budgeting for a similar number, ELL, a little bit of growth in ELL. And ELL, when you think about the number of students in the program now and then the fact that we exit a number out every year that are either recently exited or within a year, two, three year, I would say probably about twenty-five percent of our district is either recently in or still in the ELL program. That's just informational. The next slide, then, we take those enrollment figures. We have allocations for elementary, middle, high school, and total, and then what's in the budget. And you can see elementary, we've got about three point four more than what we had budgeted. We've got three point nine in middle, and we're right about at where we were. I don't know that those bottom numbers are accurate. So we've got about six or seven more than what we had allocated in the budget. The... I mentioned earlier that we do this F one ninety-five F, which is a four-year estimate, and the board will adopt that in the resolution as well. These are just kind of high-level things. When you look at nineteen twenty to twenty-two, twenty-three, we're still looking at about an additional one point seven percent enrollment drop over the next four years. That's what we're anticipating, and primarily what that is related to is just smaller kindergarten classes and larger classes in earlier years moving through the system. It's looking at that, it's not looking at forecasts from our demographers and adding them in because until the kids actually show up, I'm not real comfortable saying that they're here. So we're looking at continued kindergarten, smaller classes, and then we'll just monitor that. Revenue growth of about two percent a year, which is really pretty accurate because right now, the only real revenue growth that we receive is related to what we receive in new salaries from the state, which this year was around two percent, and that gets forecast around two percent in the next several years. And I think probably the most aggressive thing is the belief that we would be able to keep expenditure growth at two percent or less over the next four years. That's very difficult to do. I think we've reduced a lot of the things in this last cycle. So that's, you know, going to be... It's going to be difficult. And I think without either additional revenue growth and, you know, we passed the levy in two thousand nineteen. That was a three-year levy that's for twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. There is the ability at some point in the future to look at a different levy because of the increase to two dollars and fifty cents. We've talked a lot about the fact that our goal right now is rebuilding relationships within the district, rebuilding relationships within the community, and then revisiting levies when we get to the next round of them. But I just say this, we've got some things that are favorable, helping us in the next couple of years. The second year of the technology levy being collected, a little bit more in levy dollars being collected, the levy equalization goes away. But our ability to kind of manage expenditures is going to be pretty important over the next few years. The next page is just a graph, a chart, that shows what we built into the F one ninety-five F in terms of fund balance over the next four years. You can see we're starting at twenty-two point eight and projecting that we would go down to around nineteen and a half in the nineteen twenty school year and then slowly building that back up. We've talked as a board about the fund balance policy and revisiting that and potentially changing some of the parameters within that, and we'll continue to have that conversation. I think probably either the second meeting in August or the first meeting in September. We'll definitely have something wrapped up with that before we close the books for eighteen nineteen. So that kind of wraps up the general fund side of things. There's a lot of detail that goes into three hundred eighty-five million dollars. There's a lot of work that goes into that. I want to thank Tammy Gassaway in particular for doing a lot of the work. I want to thank Janay's staff, Cindy Madsen is huge on all of the personnel work that goes into that and extremely talented and skilled, they both are. But there's a lot of people, building principals, there's program managers, all kinds of people. I think the people that do the least on it is the people in the back row. No, I'm just kidding. They do plenty of work. They do wonderful work, and I love them. But I just want to make sure that, from my perspective, what's in the budget is what we communicated with the community through those forums. We talked a lot about the things that we're not able to do any longer. This week on... Yesterday, when we met with the staff, I liked talking about a lot of the things that we still... We still have a lot of real positive things in this budget. We still have the reading curriculum adoption. We still have the... The large majority of the staff, I mean, the people that serve the kids are what make the district great. And other than staff related to enrollment decline, for the most part on the cert side, we have our staff intact, we have class sizes, we have them where we've committed to them. Classified, we did take some reductions in classified. We also added some staff in classified, in particular an elementary para-intervention specialist to help at all of our elementaries deal with, work with some students that come in that are more of a challenge. So ultimately, I think we've actually added some staff in classified, even though we made some changes. We continue to support our special, our students with disabilities on IEPs. We continue to support our students with English language learners. We did not make reductions in those programs. We've made some strategic changes to technology, but we continue to support the technology program in the district. So there's all kinds of positives in this budget. And we spend weeks and months talking about all these negatives, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows there's a lot of really good things and a lot of really good people in this budget as well. So that's the general fund. I want to really quickly just talk about these other funds, the capital projects fund. You can see that we're budgeting for two hundred and fifteen million dollars worth of expenditures. So Sue in the back... Nope, see, Sue's not in the back row. She does a lot of work. She's in that row right there. Two hundred sixteen, we're planning on selling bonds in September, another two hundred million in September. When you drive through the district, you see work going on everywhere. Sifton's coming out of the ground, Elementary twenty-two's coming out of the ground, Image is coming out of the ground. We've got turf that's going in, we've got carpet going into buildings, we've got roofing, we've got HVAC systems, we've got paint, we've got furniture, we've got all kinds of stuff going on, and she's leading that extremely well. So we're going to... We're budgeting for about two hundred and sixteen million dollars worth of expenditures in the nineteen twenty school year in the capital projects fund. Transportation vehicle fund, we're still budgeting for expenditures even though we're not transferring from the general fund. We receive money every year in the transportation vehicle fund. The way that the program works is you buy the bus with your money at the district level, and then they reimburse you the depreciation over... When that bus falls off the depreciation schedule, we receive funds from the state. And so we're still putting money in to spend. I don't know that we'll spend that much, but we're putting money in to make sure that we have the capacity when we do buy buses next year. ASV fund comes to the board. We basically just adopt those budgets. It's all student-driven. The kids on the councils do that and send that through to us as a board. You adopt the... You approve the expenditures. And then the final is the debt service fund. Again, I mentioned earlier, that's where we're running payments for principal interest, for the principal interest on past bonds and new bonds. We're going to sell more bonds, so we'll have some payments in June. And we're looking at around thirty-three million dollars worth of expenditures here. Now, when we come back together in two... And I'm happy to answer any questions, but when we come back together in two weeks, we'll kind of really briefly recap. I'll probably point out a few other things in the budget that people... And I don't mean to just, you know, tease it, but like two weeks from now, there'll be more that you're really going to be excited about. But we'll come back in two weeks, talk a little bit, and then the board ultimately will approve the resolution authorizing the expenditures for the nineteen twenty school year. We'll authorize some transfers that we will make between funds, the F one ninety-five app, those kinds of things. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this now.
Do you have any questions? Is there a question from the audience off the budget? All right. Questions from the board? Or comments?
I would just like to say, well, it's been a tremendous amount of work because it's been a unique year that I think that the board has been really involved this year, starting early last fall. In fact, we had board members attending budget meetings at cabinet level for a while in the winter. We knew that there was going to be cuts that had been made this school year, and it's never easy when you're talking about cuts, especially when it affects people's lives. And it's very difficult work. And I feel like our process of working together as a school system and people's programs and figuring out what is best to serve kids really came through. I think our public input was very helpful in getting the ideas and opinions from people out there. We held, what, four forums, and then we had two follow-up forums where people could come and give us input. The board took all of that into consideration, and I think at the end of the day, we have a budget that works, that keeps us in a good place so we can keep moving forward. And we're excited about the reading curriculum that we purchased, and we really feel like it's going to help kids, and we're just... A lot of good work, and a lot of work that went into this budget.
I think that the forums in particular, the format of the forums this time as opposed to when we did it before, having the ability for just a small, you know, kind of a short presentation and then allowing people to just sit at tables and kind of share. We took, I don't know how many pages of notes from those meetings, but we had upwards, what, seven, eight hundred people show up at those forums, if I remember right. I mean, a number of participants, and we listened, right?
Yeah, we reviewed every note that we got from every table group of people that were at those forums, and we all received that information, and we came back and talked about it as a group.
And we made changes based upon what we heard in those forums. So, I mean, I think that, I think it was a good, it was a good, it was a really good experience. And hopefully, people see that we believe in that.
Well, I think it shows our commitment to the class, the classroom and programs for kids, and we did everything we could to protect jobs and staff and, you know, people over things, like you say. And I think that we were able to do that... Sorry if I talk plenty, I just came from the tennis. So we came, you know, we had... So we came, you know, we had, we had relatively few layoffs that in any way impacted our, our programs for kids and classrooms and that was very important to us. And so I think we were very successful in that endeavor. I'm not feeling great about the ones that happened in other parts of the district, but it kind of shows where our values are and that was good.
Yeah, not, not, I mean, the reality is we did make cuts, a lot of those were here at the district office, but there were some academic coaches, a few in the middle school that were eliminated. And it's not that the work isn't still there, so it's kind of spread out over more people. So there will be an impact, there's no question about that. But I think the process was the right process and as with what we said throughout, you know, once we get into the year and we start to see what are the impacts of some of the changes we had to make, then we reassess and if we need to make adjustments, we, we figure it out and we will figure it out.
Well, yeah, I'm really appreciative of that prioritization and I think sometimes we just, we don't forget to do it, but we don't talk about what, in my experience, especially compared to '09 and '11 when the citizen committee was advising the board about the list of priorities, what was not on the list this time, there were no cuts proposed to student programs. Orchestra was not on the list. Sports was not on the list. Bringing back fees that we know create inequities all over the system and maintaining the school supply policies that we have for elementary schools, those things came as significant, significant relief of burdens to families that we know half of our kids come from families who can't really afford a lot of extras. Being able to supply that through the community's generosity, through the foundation and through our levy dollars, I think indicates what we value is. That centered focus on classroom experience, student experience, maintaining our buildings, making sure that our staff still have the training that they need as we experience today in a couple of places. And so I'm really pleased. I mean, I think parents ought to be pleased that their kids can still do all the things. No doubt, we're going to work a little harder, everybody's going to have to work a little harder and class sizes are going to be a little larger, that's a shortfall. I could ask you, because I'm aware that as the layoffs notices went out, that there was work here to find places for everybody who would have been economically hurt by losing their job altogether and I think there was some reassignments offered and so forth. If you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, there were some reassignments offered.
Yeah, thank you.
When they go through that process, they are notified and whatever opportunity becomes available, they're offered that opportunity. Now, not, not in every situation do folks choose to do that. I mean, I know in talking with Janay recently that there were some individuals that chose not to. And I also know that when, like we have a new intervention pair, let's say, open up technology, the technology position that was created in the middle school and high school, there were some displaced media specialist assistants that had opportunities. I don't know how all that's washed out, but at the end of the day, I know that there were net more positions offered. I'm not going to say that there wasn't anybody that ended up being laid off, some of that might have been by choice that they chose not to take this position, but I think there probably were a few that ended up, that there wasn't necessarily something offered, they had the opportunity to apply for something, that doesn't necessarily mean that they would get that position, but the number, do you know how low the number ended up being? So, I mean, we can go back and figure that out and let you know.
It's, it's coming in comparison to private sector reduction where I've worked for companies where Christmas would just come along and there'd be 13% pink slips go off and if you wanted to reapply, you could reapply, but there is not the kind of searching and matching effort put forth in organizations in the private sector compared to what I've seen human resources department here in the building leaders look for ways to help people stay doing what they love or as close to what they love as they like.
I think one of the other things that we tried to do was appropriately notify and let people know as early as we possibly could so that they had opportunities to find other jobs, maybe not even in, at the district, but other places. So I know that we've got a number of people that left the district and went to work for other agencies. I'm not saying that they necessarily wanted to, but they at least had a little bit of lead time to help with that transition.
Yeah, and that's compared to the private sector. You might get a day.
Yeah, and that's another important part of this process that we should probably talk about is that we, I felt like when, you know, when we identified a shortfall, we were very transparent, we tried to communicate and especially when we did a reset and we, we just, we communicated to people and let them know what was happening along the process, which I feel like is extremely important in the system, especially a system this large, to let people know where they stand and what was going to happen and it, during a tough time, I don't know if it made people feel better, but at least they, they knew and it wasn't a guessing game for what was going to happen. So thanks Mike for making sure that people were notified plenty of time.
The people that did the majority of the notifications are the people in the last two rows. So while I joke about the work that they do, they obviously had to do a lot of very difficult things through the whole process and they did a great job. Except for Husein, he didn't have to do it.
I'm appreciative of the process overall. Glad that we as a board decided to make it a community process and here's much feedback this month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I go that way now or do I go this way?
You come back. All right, next up is board comments, so comments by the school board.
Come on, have a go. Can I, like, take 20 minutes? I won't take 22 minutes, I guess. I had an opportunity, an opportunity last Monday, I think it was last Monday, it was the ESD training for administrators, called the, it was called the emergency administrator training, so it took me a while to parse, but I was able to see a wonderful keynote there by someone who was talking about student culture and how we could do a better job of going where students are in our buildings, making sure that their voice is completely heard. And if you care, you can like share the slides and paperwork that I got from that, but it was, it also included some, some sessions about trauma-informed practice, what it means to build a policy. I went to some sessions that talked about how to build a policy that's more trauma-informed and I think I might actually have found one. Well, because it's a superintendent brokered policy, I'll just show that to you a little bit later and we can talk about it. And then today's boundary invasion training, which three of us went to, was very well done and I'm not going to get the second name, Kate DeWine and Michelle Crawley.
Crossden.
Crossden, sorry. Their preparation I know came from interviews and conversations with students and parents who had experienced a perception of no action or a frustration with continuing toxic stress environment for themselves and continuing boundary invasions. And what they taught our administrators was a really good start to me. Introducing trauma-informed practice into the process of reporting on boundary invasions and harassment, intimidation, bullying. It was good to see that it didn't have to be as rigid as I know it's been for the two instances where my kids had to do an HIV report. I hope we continue to grow that way. I think we'll talk about this next time, but I did some work on rewording the safety or results policies and operational expectation policies that were on student safety and I hope you'll, I think we're discussing that next time in the workshop, so we'll take a look at the proposed changes and I think it's a good trajectory. It's a lot of work this summer, but it's going to turn into something really good for kids.
Thank you for your work on it.
What we spent, as Mike said earlier in his update, that we spent Friday and Saturday together, kind of putting out our annual work plan and I think a lot of good work came out of it. We kind of took a look at all of our policies and kind of got back to the basics of what we want to see for results and expectations for the district. Felt like it was a really good couple of days and this is really kind of an exciting time. The end of the school year is always exciting, but the beginning of the school year is exciting as well because there's always, everybody's, came together for the management team yesterday. Victoria and I attended that. And, you know, in today's training, them all working together, getting ready for their staffs. Tomorrow morning, Mike and I are going to greet and welcome the new employees to the district, which is always fun, getting our, the new folks and so that'll be normal. So lots of good things happening. One thing that I, maybe as a reminder to everyone, well, not really a reminder because it's why we're here, but the first day of school is coming up in a couple of weeks, right? So, and that's, that same day, we'll have a school board meeting at night, so we probably, if we're going to be doing some visits, we'll want to get our information over to Lori so she knows where we'll be on the first day of school.
I'm excited about some things that we talked about as far as student voice and we'll be moving forward with our plan to have a subcommittee of the board that will be made up of student representatives that will help us with input from students that is different from what we do now with our breakfast with the board. So that's going to be exciting as we work on, on that and getting that formed and up and going. So I'm, I'm really excited about that and we have a busy calendar. We're going to be running around a lot in between everything else that we do, but I think it's going to be really a great year. I'm looking forward to it.
All right, anything else? All right, next is future agenda items. Do we have anything we want to list other than what Prong mentioned earlier, some of the things that are upcoming on our next meetings?
Oh, yeah. Nope.
All right, well then, next is citizen comments. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board, you can come up to the podium, have three minutes. It cannot be legal or personnel in nature. Write your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to address the board tonight? All right. All right, we'll see none. The board will go into a recess where we will sign papers. We will reconvene for a board workshop in this room. The topics will be dual immersion curriculum presentation, legislative updates, results and operational expectations. We'll get another superintendent's update and we'll have a board meeting debrief. We will then have a closed session for collective bargaining and then we'll have an executive session to review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.